Okay, at six o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Thursday, April 23rd, 2020 meeting in the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sorexina.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
And Weaver.
Here.
Thank you.
All present in the counted four. Well, welcome everyone to our, to our third official council meeting by Zoom. It's worked pretty well so far. So my thanks again to Pete and to Matthew for making this work for us. Again, welcome. Let's see, we have a young gentleman by the name of Hunter. Hunter, you're gonna get me on this one. Grodelusian, right?
That's correct.
I got it. Hunter Grodelusian, a young scout from, from our troop, 208 here in Clive that is going to say the, say the pledge of allegiance for us. We're not all gonna say it because we'd have all kinds of fun feedback in this, in this environment that we're in. So Hunter is gonna say the pledge of allegiance for us. We're really glad to have you here. And Hunter, if you would do so now, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, your honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hunter. I, I really appreciate that. And I want to share with the group and give you an opportunity to talk about your project. You've got a pretty impressive shelter that you built as part of your private. Now, was that Eagle Scout project or?
Yes, sir.
Well, tell, well, share, share with us about that.
Okay, so I raised a total of $5,017. Took me about a year to do for shade structure at Walnut Hills United Methodist Church. And it, it took a little while to build the thing, but it went really well. And it's been approved by the city. And it's all signed off and ready to go.
Well, congratulations on that work. And A for the project, B for, for your determination and perseverance pursuing an Eagle Scout award. That is, that's tremendous. And congratulations to you for that. And thank you again for saying the pledge of allegiance for us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We're gonna move to approval of the agenda now. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Not all of us in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed? The agenda is approved. Okay, now, this is the time for citizens' presentation. This is where anybody that's, that's present here at the meeting can raise their hand and address the council on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so?
And folks, I'd ask if you would click on the participant button in the lower area of your screen. And you, then once you do that, a white box will show up on the right-hand side, and you will see raise hand. That's one way to grab my attention. You can also use the chat function. If you would like to send Pete to cook a note via chat, let me know that you would like to ask a question. Mayor, I don't see any hands raised or any chat.
Thank you, Pete. Seeing none, we'll move to consent items.
Move through.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Hearing none, will the council please vote?
Waiting on Ted to come in.
Yeah, I vote yes. My, I can.
Got it.
That passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, now we have several presentations this evening. But first, we have the always lovely Trina Radzky-Sukon from the Clive Community Health and Wellness Initiative to provide an annual update for the council. Trina, nice to have you with us.
Thank you, Scott. Glad to be here to give the update.
Well, excellent. Please proceed as you're ready.
All right. Do we have the PowerPoint presentation up?
Yes, one moment, please.
Okay.
Matt, you should be able to share.
All right, can you see it all?
Okay.
Looks good.
This looks good. Thanks, Matt. Okay, so I will go ahead and give a little bit of an update to our council here on our Clive Community Health and Wellness Initiative. And this next slide really is to give you guys a better idea of all the players, all the community partners that we have really rallied together to build our, our different tracks of Eat Well, Move More, and Feel Better. We have a lot of great expertise working on our different task forces. Brought in, they bring in a lot of different programs, different research, and again, just different, different expertise that we can utilize on our task force, our task forces. And so, and also, Scott, if you ever want to say anything on any of these as well, please do so. And Scott is a big part of our, our Clive Community Health and Wellness Initiative.
Thank you.
All right, so the next slide. Okay. There we go. This is just kind of, just showing a little bit of our accomplishments that we have had over the last couple of years. Actually, the National Pork Board was really great in helping design this for us. And it just shows a little bit of what we've done. Battle of the Burbs, this is a signature event that we work with Nick Mick on. And our, our job is the Clive Community Health and Wellness Initiative is to promote this to the community and try to increase participation as best as we can. And most of you guys know, I believe, that last year, we helped Nick Mick to increase participation by 300 participants. And Clive was the winner of that. And Scott was able to wear the, I guess, the belt for this past year. And I don't know, Scott, if you want to mention anything else. But this is one of our signature events that we uphold and support in our initiatives.
Well, I guess.
And then other things that we do and what we've done in the past here is we partner in with our Clive schools. So Schuler Elementary, Crestview, Indian Hills, in many different ways. We, oops. Did you say something, Scott? Sorry.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Okay. We support them, really our schools, in a number of ways. We provide nutrition education. We help secure funding for schools, as you can see on here, and promote different programs like Pick a Better Snack, Farm to School, and promote meals on the move. Other things that we've done, the National Pork Board, you've probably heard this a number of times, but we helped, we partnered with National Pork Board and developed Clive's first community garden. And within the last two years, we were able to produce over 500 pounds of produce, and then partner with Clive Community Services and donate all of those, all of the produce to their participants or their members. And I think from there, we can move on to the other slides. So now, moving on to what we have really planned for the next one to two years. And this is where I kind of want to land and talk just a little bit about. So for our Eat Well track for 2020, we have, we have plans on establishing four community slash school gardens. And with our COVID, COVID kind of crisis that has changed our plans a little bit here with our schools. So that's kind of been put on hold, obviously with schools out. But we're going to look to see what we can do maybe for the summer months, if, if they do perhaps look at bringing meals, summer meals sites back up, but also probably concentrating more on potentially for next fall with them. But we are still on pace with National Pork Board. We will, or they've had some changes in their, in their staffing, but we've connected them with Eat Greater Des Moines, which is part of our Eat Well Task Force. And so they're working with them to make sure that they're able to continue their corporate giving garden. We know that Clive Community Services really depends on that. So we want to make sure that that keeps going. And then we have a new business jumping on board with Community Garden, and that's McClure Engineering. They're very enthusiastic. They're very excited about doing this. They have engineers, obviously. So they're going all out. I think they're even talking about creating raised gardens in the form of one of their old logos. So lots there to come. They're gonna make this about family and bringing in some events around their gardens. So looking forward to that. All that's still a go. Supporting local businesses and community organizations to increase food and drink options through like healthy vending and concessions and so forth. And what we've done here is we've provided the City Hall and Public Works a vending machine assessment. And we thought that we would work with city first, helping them create maybe a little more healthy options, and then using the city as a model for other businesses within the community. So working with the city at this time, again, we provided the assessment. And now we're going to work with them and the vendors to look at some healthier options. And then food rescue and delivery is a big part of what we do in the Eat Well Task Force. And in 2019, we connected Clive Community Services with national grocers. And we're going to be helping support that again in 2020. The Waki Food Pantries, they are often with a surplus of some of their donations. So we're working on trying to get volunteers to, you know, get the food that might be in surplus there and bring it to Clive Community Services. And then again, stuff, things that we're doing with the businesses, one of those is connecting them to food rescue and, and doing things like providing a box at their location that if they have any surplus from meetings or so forth, they can put them in the boxes and then trying to get that food to Clive Community Services. So we're working on the logistics of all that again here in 2020. Developing a pop-up stand through grant funds. Well, our grant, a lot of our grant funds have been put on hold due to COVID. And so we're not sure about what, how this is gonna turn in the summer months. But really, a pop-up scan is something that's happening nationally. And it's, it's really a great way to bring fresh food, fresh produce, vegetables to certain areas within the city that might not have access to that. So it's not quite a farmer's market. It's on a very smaller scale than that, but a pop-up scan to again, bring fresh produce to areas within the city. So we're gonna keep our eye on that and see what we can do still potentially for the summer or fall. Okay, next slide. And Move More, so in our, our Move More track, that what we've been working on for 2020 is, one, creating a master plan for bike rentals to encourage active commutes. Well, in December of 2019, we were able to connect Street Collective to the city of Clive. And Street Collective has been studying in other communities across the US, the results of implementing e-bikes into some of their bike rental programs. And it's been very, very successful. It has increased the usage of the bikes tremendously. Obviously, with e-bikes, you're not, it's not just for physical activity. It's, it definitely helps that, but it's also providing people with another opportunity to access, you know, grocery stores and, and appointments and things like that. And so they're looking at doing that in their Des Moines Bike Rental Program. But they've been very interested in connecting or creating a spine to one of the, the suburbs and trying to connect a suburb to the, to Des Moines. And so they were, they had the opportunity to apply for a grant. And so we mentioned Clive, the Clive Community. And so we connected them to the city of Clive. And then this is something that the city of Clive was in support of. And so those organizations, those leaders got together and they have applied for the grant. So we are looking forward to hearing more about that. And I'm sure maybe Matt could probably give an update on that too in the near future. But we're really excited about providing three stations with somewhere, I think, maybe 12 bike, e-bikes within the city of Clive. Again, I talked about the supporting the Battle of the Burbs event. This year, it's August 1st. And we are again, going to utilize our task force members to get the word out, promote the event, and try to increase participation again this year. And hopefully, cross our fingers, we'll have Scott wearing the belt again this year. Another, another thing we're doing, offering Walk With These programming. This is a national evidence-based program. And we are kind of the hub to help expand that through the state of Iowa. And so here in Clive, we started with the, the retirement communities, Woodlands Creek and Walnut Ridge. And we're working with them, connecting them with the Waki Apex students, and getting our certified instructors to walk with these, connected to the students to help provide the education, and getting senior students to walk with our seniors at our retirement communities. So we started that at Woodlands Creek. We were just about to start that at Walnut Ridge, and then kind of COVID happened. So all of them are very interested. They say the seniors get a lot out of working with the students. So it's a program we'd like to see continue. And then Carrot, if you want to go to the next slide, Matt. Carrot is something we're really excited about, although it has been postponed. We were gonna launch in April, but we're going to postpone that and wait to find out more about the health of our businesses, because our local businesses are a big part of this launch. So Carrot is a mobile app that works on iPhones. So members of the community would download this app. They would, it's a super simple download as well. And they would select Clive Community Health and Wellness Initiative. And then at that point, the app starts to analyze their step history, and then it starts to set step goals for them. And then every time a member is accomplishing those goals, then they earn rewards. And this is where our local businesses come in. Our local businesses can really help increase the physical activity of our, of our Clive community members, and obviously then be able to affect the health of our, our community. And they can do that by providing gift cards as rewards in the system. This is a very successful program in Livonia, Michigan with Beaumont Health. They have found also that this has increased traffic to local businesses. So it actually helps the health of the businesses as, as well. So not only are we gonna use it to increase physical activity, but we're gonna also have members of our community be able to earn points by attending nutrition education and attending maybe mental health education. Again, we have a lot of experts on our task forces, programs. And so try to drive traffic to those programs. Also, we're going to add the Clive, a city of Clive programming with the Parks and Rec. So any other programs that they're offering, we're going to try to incentivize our members in our community to participate in those programs by being able to earn rewards. Really excited about this. Like I said, we're, this is on hold due to COVID-19, and we're waiting for our businesses to get back up and running. And finally, on our next slide, for our Feel Better Task Force, this just started back in July of 2019. We're doing a number of different programs and initiatives. And one of those we're doing is a partnership with the city of Clive. The city of Clive created a program around mental health and parks. And so what we want to do as the initiative is to get this information. It's a brochure that the city of Clive has put together to increase the awareness of mental illness and how that can be positively affected by, you know, accessing trails and parks and getting out there in nature. And so what we want to do is take these brochures and get them in the hands of healthcare providers so they can begin to prescribe walks in our Clive parks and our trails. So that is the one way that we think that we can really help with this program. We're also establishing and enhancing anti-bullying initiatives in schools. So again, a partnership with the Waki Apex. I'm personally working with some high school students to raise awareness amongst Clive elementary students about bullying. We were going to do in-person kind of little videos and in-person little kind of fun activities, but we are going to do this now online. So the students are posting or helping create posts for our Facebook page and getting that out to the public and raising awareness there. But they're also working on a video that they're, they're going to be able to share virtually and potentially get this in the hands of parents to help them then, or provide them maybe some content for some, some things that they're doing with homeschooling right now. So that's, that is what we're working with the Waki Apex students. Promoting strategies for substance abuse prevention, treatment, recovery. We're continuously working with Rally nationally and Rally Iowa Partners. And we were going to try to get the Code Three trailer to come to the Clive festivals here. We know that that is kind of up in the air and still, you know, some just being talked about. And so if we cannot continue to do that for this year, we definitely want to be putting our names down for next year to bring the Code Three trailer in. Code Three trailer, if you don't know what that is, it is where kind of retired DEA officers created or makeshifted a trailer to look like a teenager's bedroom and bathroom and other areas of the home to show parents and give tours to parents to show them some red, some warning signs or some red flags or some ways that they can detect if they're teenagers in trouble or, you know, misusing or, or abusing substance, substances. So we're hoping to do that for sure next year. But if we don't get to do it this year, we are going to work with Rally to see if we can get it in some webinars and get it out to like parent teacher associations or, or some other groups that we can get that information out to them. And we're working with local businesses to provide health education and workshops all around, you know, mental health, like mental health, first aid, that training, we're trying to get that out to businesses and so forth. And last slide, well, I think most, yeah, for the most part, last slide. We're not gonna forget the employers. And when we first started in 2017, we just had the Eat Well Task Force going. And we were approaching employers that way. But then we added Move More, and then we were getting out to employers that way. And then finally, we, we added Feel Better in 2019. And so we decided we needed to do this more as a holistic approach. And so we've pulled together strategies from our Eat Well, Move More, and Feel Better Task Forces to kind of create a package of wellness options that employers can take part in at no cost to them. And basically, it's a value add if they have an existing wellness program. So again, this is, these are things that we knew as a task force or as task force members that we could provide at no cost to our employers and hopefully fill gaps and be able to address some needs that they may have for wellness programming. So this is our attempt. We have had only one meeting with the Clive Chamber. And this was in December when I just introduced the idea. But any, any thoughts from you guys, any suggestions of how we can get our businesses engaged in Carrot, but also of course, this, you know, this wellness programming as well is, would be, I'd, I'd love to hear it. So. And then finally, our last, last slide, and I'm, I'm pretty much done here. And I hope this was a good update for you guys of what kind of things that we've been doing in the past and what we have planned for this year and the next year. But we did create a, we had a nonprofit foundation, but we knew that we needed more boots on the ground and really a, an organization to really move these efforts forward. And so we created CHP Community. And that really is our entity that's taking, that's going to hopefully sustain these efforts over time and get more and more people involved and really help improve the, the health of our community. Have any questions?
Trina, thank you. I see that we have one chat question in there. But I just, I want to say quickly that, you know, it's been fun to watch this grow and materialize over the, this will be the third year now, really under your leadership. So thank you for your enthusiasm, for your expertise in sharing that with our community. A blessing to all of us. So with that, council questions? And Pete, if you want to, well, we have one question there. So if you want to go ahead and start, that'd be great.
Sure. Let's go ahead and start with Councilwoman Judkins' question. She'd asked about the devices using the Carrot app.
And say that again, about the Carrot app?
Yes, there in the chat, Councilwoman asked whether or not the Carrot app works on non iPhones as well.
Right now, it's iPhones, iPhone specifically. And they have done a number of, I guess, research on this. And the majority of people do have iPhones, and they even have done research on our, maybe our most challenged socioeconomic areas of communities. And they seem to have iPhones available. And so right now, this is what, what it's available on. Livonia, again, Livonia, Michigan, they have a very similar community health initiative and have had a lot of success. And they are starting to look at other options to really engage those that don't have it. But they are able to engage a good majority of the community with going through an iPhone. And I totally understand that that could be a barrier for some.
Thank you. Councilman Klein, do you have a question?
Eric, I think you're muted, perhaps.
Oops, I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, great plan, Trina. A lot of exciting initiatives here. Did have a question on the Walk With These program that currently you're using or involving Waki Apex students. You know, there's a lot of students that go to both Valley and Dowling that may be interested in participating in this program. And I just wanted to like to see it opened up to those other two schools as well for participation.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We start, we're, we're just starting some of the work with Waki Apex, just because again, Clive, you know, enters into Dallas County. But no, we, we are starting to engage other, not necessarily schools, and that's a great idea, but even like Clive Lions and some other groups that, you know, might be interested in, in doing these things. But it's, I think it's, it's just, I've seen it already happen a couple of times. And when the students walk in the doors, those seniors just get a big smile on their face. So yes, I think this could be profound. I think it could be really impactful in some other communities and engaging other students. Absolutely.
Are there other questions for Trina tonight?
No, I don't see other chat comments or comments.
Well, Trina, thank you so much. Please keep up the great work and looking forward to seeing your results through the summer. And hopefully, some of these things that have been kind of tamped down by COVID-19 will, will reemerge later on the summer and fall timeframe, as, as we all want to get out and, and get and stay healthy. So great job, and thanks for being with us tonight.
Oh, thank you very much. And if it's okay, Pete, if we can send our council members our CHP Community Facebook page. We need some more likes to get the word out and awareness of all these initiatives. And we're really supporting. And we're really supporting a lot of our businesses in the community and providing, you know, their education, especially right now with COVID, we're trying to get word out. So the more people liking it, the, the better really. So if you don't mind, I'll send that to you, Pete. And if you could pass that on, I'd love that.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. Right, thanks everybody.
Thank you again. Okay, very good. We'll move to the second presentation now, which is Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority Monitoring Study. And we've got John Swanson, I think, here to cover that with us. John?
Yes, thank you. So giving an update, we've partnered with Drake University, looking at a pretty comprehensive study of Walnut Creek. So I'm going to give a little update on that work that's just got started this last June of 2019. So Matt, we'll go and go to the next slide. So it's going to give a little background that when we think about watersheds like Walnut Creek, the water quality, the, the stream health, the flooding, all those different things are really impacted by a variety of different components such as land use, climates, physical and chemical characteristics. And we really have to think about how those different characteristics are impacting our watershed and what it, what is happening across it as it moves downstream. We'll go to the next slide. And we do know as a pretty generic that's different land uses have very significant impacts on that watershed from your, for your natural ecosystem there on the left to an agricultural system, to an urban system. Each of those have different impacts on flashiness, on levels of nutrients. And that was really a question that we'd, we'd been considering in Walnut Creek and several other watersheds is here in central Iowa, we have a very altered system between agriculture, urban and newer urban developing areas. And how are these impacting Walnut Creek? We'll go ahead, Matt. And so as we came into this, Drake University presented a monitoring system to set up in Walnut Creek and really seeking to answer a few different things. Specifically, how does different land uses impact our watershed? How are, how is water quality and stream health changing yearly by season? And when you're thinking about stream health and water quality, what factors of that whole long list are giving the largest impact? And then finally, you think about a watershed management authority, the real goal is to implement management practices that improve stream health, improve flood reduction. And how can we take water monitoring data to impact management practices and, and try and focus in on the most important practices? Go ahead, Matt. So what Drake proposed is really a very diverse monitoring system that really took into account a long list of both water quality and water quantity characteristics. Everything from the physical components to the environmental components, to the whole, a whole variety of chemical and biological monitoring devices. They presented this opportunity to the Walnut Creek Board. We'll go ahead, Matt. And really to tie this in with this diverse watershed that's, that has very, three very distinct areas, what we ended up moving forward with was three different monitoring locations. One of them that encompasses the upstream agricultural area. And then a second one that is essentially the newer developed portion of the watershed, also encompassing areas that are quickly developing. And then finally, a downstream monitoring station that really takes into account that's older urban developed out neighborhoods. Go ahead, Matt. And since June, there's been a lot of data collected and I didn't want to get too much into the weeds with this young data, but a couple of highlights that we drew out, we did have a pretty in-depth one-year presentation to the Council of WMAs back in February. And one of the items that was presented was when looking at nitrates specifically, one of the things that jumped off the screen that is, has been seen in other parts of the state in the Midwest is this 80/20 rule where nitrates flowing through the watershed, about 80% of those nitrates are coming through the watershed in about 20% of the time. And you can see there in general, our agricultural areas are having our highest nitrate concentrations. And things are generally getting more diluted due to less nitrate inputs in our more urban areas of the watershed. And I would add that you see Four Mile there on the left too. This, this study was originally largely funded by Des Moines Waterworks in partnership with several communities. When seeing this opportunity arise, a lot of the Four Mile communities said, hey, could we do the same thing in Four Mile Creek? So we're doing a mayor's study in Four Mile Creek. So we have three stations in Four Mile as well that are collecting the same data. We'll go and go to the next slide. Another one that's been interesting that I wanted to pull from is the E. coli and coliform bacteria information that's been gathered. Somewhat interesting and that's a pretty regularly, we're going over the DNR recommended levels specifically in our urban areas. And we're excited in the next couple of years to really tease out some of that information to see what those sources could be in the Walnut Creek watershed. We'll go to the next slide. Another interesting slide that I wanted to share, Drake University put together was water quality in Iowa is a pretty important topic. And they did a little quick, little research with some local newspapers in Des Moines and they looked at Madison, Wisconsin and Lincoln, Nebraska that are similar sizes to the Des Moines metro. And one of the interesting things they found was if you were to look up the word nitrate in Madison, that word was searched for about every 4,300 people. Similarly in Lincoln, even a little bit more common, about every 1,200 people, you had to search for the word nitrate. But then if you get here in central Iowa, the number was 355 people and every 355 we had the search of nitrate. So water quality is really a hot topic right now and it's, it's increasingly important, especially in Walnut Creek where we are draining directly importing towards the Des Moines Waterworks drinking water intake. We'll go to the next slide. And we've also had some look, a benefit to having the researchers in looking at the watershed is, is they have opportunities to come up and look at other sets of data. And one of those sets that they just, that they dove into a little bit was looking at some of the historical flood data of Walnut Creek, Four Mile Creek and also Beaver Creek. And looking at the flashiness of those systems, essentially how fast the water comes up and comes down. And an interesting takeaway was that in Walnut Creek, we've seen a steady increase in flashiness. That's really mirrored by that, that growth of our urban areas. Different however, was in the Four Mile Creek watershed where in that lower portion of the watershed where there really hasn't been significant development since 1970s, the flashiness really hasn't increased. But if you look upstream in Four Mile, in the Ankeny area where we've had a lot of development, we see a quickly, in quick increase in flashiness. So that was an interesting takeaway. That's a, is a little side study that they're looking into right now. We'll go to the next slide. And overall, a couple of key takeaways that we wanted to share. Again, we, we are seeing that, that increase in flashiness in Walnut Creek and that's something we're going to continue to monitor. We're also looking at adding some flow monitoring system to some of the tributaries in Walnut Creek to tie and tease out which tributaries may be adding to that the most. We're seeing some interesting things with, with the bacteria loads that we're going to continue to look into. And but an interesting takeaway from this whole study is that they're able to take all of these different parameters and plot them together and really rank Walnut Creek in comparison to streams across the nation and across the world. And overall, stream health in this first year is generally in a satisfactory to healthy condition, which, which is exciting for the watershed, that we don't have, this one seemed to have any largely very detrimental issues in the watershed. We'll go to the next slide. And it's important that, and Peter Levi with Drake University really wanted to highlight, we have a lot of data and I'm just giving the kind of the skim top of it right here, but really only about a sixth of the way through our collection. And we have a three-year study planned out, which includes hourly monitoring with some, with some automated grab sampling equipments. And we also have bi-weekly grab sample happening at those three sites. In summer 2020, we're looking to add some storm sampling information in those higher flow periods. And we've actually finalized a partnership with the Department of Energy. We're actually have a robotic drone that drives up to look at specifically at nitrates and waterages at points, some nitrate hotspots. So some exciting new developments in the watershed with this study already. We'll go to the next slide. And to wrap things up, again, this really all started with Des Moines Waterworks and Drake University. And what we saw is originally a small project grew quickly. Again, with the Watershed Management Authority Board, we simply presented the information. City of Clive, several others stepped up and said, hey, we'd like to see if we could do this even a little bit bigger, make a study that's across the watershed. And that's, leadership really grew into the Four Mile Creek. And now we're excited and moving forward with this study over the next three years in both of those watersheds. So that's what I got for you guys today. And if you have any questions, I'd be welcome to answer them.
Any questions?
I'm with you. Lost my.
I've got, I've got a quick question.
Yeah, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wondered, great presentation. On the flashiness, would our OXPOS, as we continue to develop those with nature conservancy, would that help reduce that amount?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great point of, and OXPOS is one of those management practices that we've installed in the watershed. And the more practices such as those that can hold water and keep and slow them down from dumping right into the creek are going to help with that flashiness. With some of the preliminary things, in certain tributaries, there's very large amounts of water, water. So we're either going to need a lot of those small OXPOS or specifically maybe looking into some bigger structures as well, if there's, if there's good sites we can find.
May I ask a question?
I couldn't hear you. Were you talking about me there, Pete?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. Hi, John. I was curious, are you planning to participate in tomorrow's North Raccoon meeting?
Um, no, I was not.
Okay. I think it would be good for Polk County to be represented because I was planning to let the council know that there have been some questions or concerns raised by four of the more northern county participants in the North Raccoon, possibly looking at, asking the Polk County area to leave the North Raccoon group.
Yep, we're, we're aware of that and Bob Rice is definitely going to be in attendance. We may also have some supervisors participating. That came across our desk today and I think they're taking it very seriously.
Okay, very good. I know there won't be any voting that will happen on it tomorrow. I've talked with Carrie in Storm Lake and some others. I just wanted to make sure you were aware. And I think this kind of information that you're determining for this part of the, that whole watershed group would be valuable for them to know about that we're taking the urban component very seriously as well, so.
Yeah, I think it's a very unfortunate circumstance and it shows there, it seems to be some breakdown, again, that, that urban fear seems to really be coming out about what is everyone's intent where I think many of us that have been very involved with the WMAs know that the true partnership opportunities is the true benefits. And we have to find a way to really kind of break down those barriers of fear.
Right.
Other questions, Council? Well, seeing none, I want to thank you both for a great study, tremendous information. And to Susan's point, I think the more that we can share it, the better off we're all going to be. But I know you're just getting started with this great work. So best of luck to you and continue to let us know how we can be helpful in what you're doing.
Yes, thank you, much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move then to the third presentation, which is the, the impact of stormwater ordinances on runoff control in the city of Clive. I think Mike is going to share that with us. Mike and Jamie are going to share that with us.
Yes, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us on the meeting today to talk about some of the research that we've been doing. My name is Jamie Schessler. I am a PhD student that is now studying under Dr. Michael Perez. We were originally up at Iowa State when this project kicked off at the end of last summer, just about the beginning of August 2019. We have since moved down to Auburn University in Alabama, but still have several lab mates up at Iowa State and we are still excited on our work that we're doing at the city of Clive. And so that is looking at the impact of the post-construction stormwater ordinance on runoff control. So rather than looking at the water quality side of things, we're looking at water quantity. So Matt, if you'd hit the next slide. So just a bit of background that John had touched on just before me. Clive is experiencing land use change from lands that were historically agricultural to developing suburbs and city. Matt, would you hit again? So this picture is taken in 2004. And if Matt will click once more, lots of animations, just 15 years later, this is that same section that we're seeing developed. And so with all of this development, there's an increase in impervious areas. And that just means we're replacing some of that natural or that agricultural land and paving it or putting infrastructure up that prevents water from infiltrating the ground, but instead is running off those areas and being much more quickly conveyed through the stormwater systems and getting into Walnut Creek more quickly. So there's associated water quality and quantity pressures on Walnut Creek. And so Clive adopted the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority's master plan in 2016, which aims to restore the water and soil health in that watershed. Matt, would you click again? Once more. I apologize, lots of animations. And we can go to the next slide. So to continue with that, a post-construction stormwater management ordinance was adopted and the stormwater management manual for Clive was revised in 2019. Some of these revisions include the construction sites with more than 5,000 square feet of impervious area must have a post-construction stormwater management plan. And that plan just hopes to mimic the natural hydrology or pre-development conditions of the sites that are not, that are now being developed. So reducing peak flow, reducing any sediment or nutrient pollution associated with that. And then really reducing risk to that developed infrastructure and improving the Walnut Creek ecosystems. So our side of this research project aims to understand the benefits that that ordinance is providing to Walnut Creek watershed. So it's our hope that these results show that the ordinance is really improving the, the health in the watershed. And this will set the precedent for stormwater management amongst neighboring communities and just inspire other communities to take similar initiatives and then just have a unified approach to managing the stormwater. Click please. So we've outlined five goals or five objectives. So the first was to develop a hydrologic model of two subdivisions. And so the idea behind that is that we're modeling a subdivision that was developed before the post-construction stormwater ordinance was adopted and one that was developed after that ordinance. We'll get to our second goal. And this is instrumenting or collecting actual discharge data in four locations. So we have four monitoring stations in two, two subset division, basically. Our third goal is to calibrate our models based on storm-specific data that's collected. So we have a modeling and a monitoring component and we'll get those to match up. And then our fourth goal is to show or determine the effectiveness of the post-construction stormwater management plans in reducing discharge and any of the associated consequences in the Walnut Creek watershed. And then from what we observe and from our knowledge, if we can provide any recommendations or further guidance to the city of Clive, we will do so. Move to our next slide. So our first subdivision that we're monitoring is Angel Park. This was first developed in 2012. So this is our community we're looking at prior to the adoption of the ordinance. About 71 total acres and we're monitoring 56 of those. Just for an idea, Angel Park is about 80% built out. And there is a dry detention basin with just about 500,000 cubic feet of storage directly upstream of discharge to the Walnut Creek. Could you click? So up in the top corner, we see Walnut Creek. We'll click. And this is our, our dry detention area. And this is our discharge point that we're monitoring. So basically this, we're looking at flow So basically this, we're looking at flow rate going through that discharge. Next. And then we have one other monitoring point, and that's to see the flow that's coming into that area from offsite. Conversely, we look at our next division, and this would be Shadow Creek. This was the first major development since the adoption of the ordinance. So it's 91 total acres and 67.2 or so of those are being monitored. There's an expected completion in this community of 2023, so a couple of years out. But Shadow Creek has a wet detention pond that should accommodate the 100-year storm. So a two-year 24-hour storm is typically the design. So we're really going above here to make sure that there is some extra detention there. And on top of that, I'm making sure that there's topsoil preservation and soil quality restoration. So the idea behind this is with healthier soils, we'll be able to infiltrate rather than just convey that water or even just hold it into detention, hopefully promote some of that infiltration back into the groundwater table. So again, just outlining where Walnut Creek is. And then that wet detention pond that I was just speaking of. And similarly, we're monitoring at the discharge point and then an offsite point. So just comparing the flows that are coming in to what's going out. We'll go ahead and click. Just to show where we are, as I mentioned, we had started to instrument these areas at the beginning of August 2019. These are some images from that day, but you'll see just inside these storm sewer pipes that we have a mounting ring with an area flow mod, velocity flow module. And so that's continually collecting data on the, on the water flows going through there. With that, we also had a rain gauge out for as long as we could. Unfortunately, Iowa winters do limit the ability or capability rather of that. So we plan to continue instrumenting into hopefully this spring and into the summer as COVID-19 wraps up and we can get some more of the equipment that we need. But we'll be monitoring now the levels in those detention ponds. So in the dry detention in Angel Park and then the wet detention pond in Shadow Creek. We'll click this line. So just to show some quick preliminary data, if we look at the top, we see what rainfall looks like, and that's in inches. So that's what those blue bars are. At the bottom, we have dates, and then these values are all flow rates. So what we see in red are flow rates that we see going through Angel Park. So remember that one was pre-adoption of the ordinance. And that green line shows what's moving through Shadow Creek, the discharge of Shadow Creek into Walnut Creek. And so that was after the adoption of the ordinance. So we do see lower flow rates. Now, there are several contributing factors, including how much impervious areas are there now, the contributing areas to these pipes. But we are, we're expecting to continue to see similar results and lesser flow rates. And in turn, less pollution or erosion forces going into Walnut Creek. Click one more time, Matt. And so just again, really want to thank you all for the opportunity for us to talk a little bit about what we're doing and giving this research update. We really appreciate the city of Clive and how serious you take your stormwater management. And we have similar passions in that way, but I'm happy to take any questions. And Michael Perez is also on the call, and he can field any as well.
Questions, Council, for Jamie and for Mike? Well, thank you, dazzled him, Jamie. I guess, I guess what I'd like to share is this is a lot of work. And I know you, that you have a lot before you. You're just getting started. It's going to be fun to see some of the results in these new developing properties in areas in our city that, to see how this, this actually plays out in your study. So great work. Thank you for the partnership. You've got some great sponsors in Auburn and Iowa State. Again, continue to let us know how we can be helpful in your work.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move to, to action items this evening. We have two of them. The first is regarding FY20 budget, COVID-19 financial impacts. Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. The action we have before you tonight, and one thing I wanted to say real quickly, just in follow-up to the previous presentation, particularly the Shadow Creek one. Now, that is something that we've talked a lot about in terms of the implementation of the post-stormwater management ordinance. And in terms of is it, is it truly effective? And so it'll be really exciting to see the results of that over time here as we have more data collected and be able to share that with, with our neighboring communities in terms of those practices that we're looking at, particularly as a result of the Capitol Crossroads Stormwater Initiative, where some ordinances have been created for community consideration within our watershed. And so this is going to hopefully be some helpful data that we can show at least one version of stormwater management in terms of maybe limiting those peak discharges. So it's hopefully exciting to see a little bit more of that here in the future. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that at the, at the outset. Moving on to the item that, the action item tonight, the action itself is setting the public hearing for the budget amendment, which is a normal process that we do every year. And the budget amendment would be a public hearing in May, the second council meeting in May. But with that, we thought we would take a moment to at least talk a little bit about the anticipated, at least at this point in time, kind of rough financial impacts of, on the revenue side for the city of Clive in terms of COVID-19 and the impacts on our revenue. So it was included in the packet, and I'll see if I can screen here just to have everybody on the same page. But what we wanted to outline for you, and again, it won't necessarily go through the memo in detail in terms of what was included in your packet. But what we really see is on the, on the property tax side, not seeing any major concerns in terms of revenues and collection there. It's just more of a question of whether or not the revenue is delayed. We did, even since I, we crafted this memo, we have already seen some additional revenue coming in that we heard from the county treasurer's office that will be coming in in addition to the 450,000 from Polk County that I mentioned. We also know there's more coming in from Dallas County as well. So we anticipate, at least on this delayed revenue side, we'll be a lot closer to, between the expected and best, best-case scenarios on property tax. And then depending on when the governor decides to at all extend her delay in terms of the interest and fees and charges of, of delinquent property tax payments and when she may reset that will affect this number quite a bit in terms of that 100% collection. So what we've heard from other communities is the collection has been, has been strong. So we don't see any major impacts to the property tax revenue at this point. I think, as I mentioned a little later in the memo, I think the bigger question on property taxes will be the long-term impacts. When we are working our way out of the economic challenges with COVID-19, what is the long-term impacts to property valuations in the community? Residential, still questionable, but I think one thing I'll be very interested to monitor is commercial values, particularly as our business community is impacted greatly by this pandemic and the mitigation efforts that we're needing to implement as a state and as a country. What that does for commercial values, if we have situations where there's more vacancies, there's less revenue being generated at those commercial properties, that will have an effect on commercial values long-term. So as we go into the next budget cycle, the next budget process, will be very key for us to think through that in terms of being even more conservative and conscious of our reserves in terms of what those long-term impacts may be. As I reflect on the last major economic recession that we experienced back in '08 and '09, more related to housing, but definitely had an impact. The delay was a couple of years later in terms of how it kind of catches up on the property tax value side. So something just to keep in mind on the property taxes going forward. Hotel motel, largest impact in the short term, just in terms of the lack of usage of hotel motel rooms in our community. This will have an impact in revenues, probably the most significant in terms of a percentage decline that we'll see out of all these revenues. Fortunately, unfortunately, a large portion of this revenue is actually sent outside the organization to Catch Des Moines and Bravo Greater Des Moines, who are going to really deal with the brunt of this hotel motel impact with that revenue source being by far the 90%, if not larger, source of revenue for those two organizations. So there's definitely some concern there in terms of their operations. And in Bravo's case, the granting out of those dollars that go to our arts and culture institutions in the metro area groups. And then the, basically the downstream impacts are going to be significant on the hotel motel side for those two organizations and then the, or particularly Bravo and the organizations that they support as well. So in terms of our side of the picture here, and had a little bit of back and forth with Catch Des Moines and what they're seeing. It's, they're seeing, expecting some pretty significant impact here over the summer months in terms of their occupancy and not really seeing much of a recovery. Again, this is everybody trying to predict with a crystal ball, but seeing things maybe getting a little bit more back to normal by early, basically by 2021 calendar year in terms of usage. But again, that's a projection at this point. So that's one thing I just want to very much mention again. These are all very rough projections of what we know at this point, not knowing when economic activity is going to be turned back on, if you will. Just trying to do a rough sketch of where we're at at this point. On the franchise fee side, this is still one that we're going to be interested in monitoring. Not knowing what the impacts will be. We have, you know, obviously some commercial activities, some commercial properties that are probably not utilizing energy as much as they were before. We've heard generally that energy use is down. But at the same point, we have a lot of people at home and we're about much, you know, larger residential community versus commercial in terms of our valuation in a number of homes. So how does that translate? So we anticipate some impact here, but still kind of waiting and seeing what that looks like. And hopefully we'll have more information for you on this when we come around for the budget amendment at the end of May. Have some more details on a lot of these revenues after we see another month or so of experience. What'll also come up in the budget amendment process will be other fees and service charges. So we know we're going to have some impact interest income with the extremely low federal fund rate. That will be, you know, in terms of what we have budgeted, that'll be less. We'll have a little bit less in things like court fines, maybe even ambulance billing in terms of our, generally our call volume is down, which is good from a public safety standpoint in terms of limiting exposures to our folks on a regular basis. But that has impacts other ways too, in terms of a, you know, less traffic on the roadways. So that translates into less tickets likely. So these are ones that are going to, we're going to be watching quite a bit in terms of negative impact. And then I think in the bigger scheme of things, although there'll be corresponding expenditures that will be limited as well is what we do with a lot of our leisure services programs, our recreation programs, programs in the parks that generate revenue, rental of facilities. And then ultimately, the aquatic center will be the big question mark that we're still kind of waiting and seeing. And there's been a lot of conversations amongst the communities of looking kind of early May to make a decision on that related to aquatic centers and having some coordination there. Particularly with the governor's cancellation of the rest of the school year in person and then the potential of that school year starting much earlier in August. That really kind of affects our aquatic season on the back end as well. So more to come on that in the next couple of weeks as we, but that'll have an impact on revenues and expenditures that will include in the budget amendment in May. So overall, those were general fund-related activities. So some of this is delayed revenue, some of this is expected loss as outlined here and also in the summary form at the end of the memo or this portion of the memo. So as kind of moving on to sales tax, that's another one that is, is an unknown at this point. We anticipate some kind of negative impact, just not knowing what kind of percentage there is. I've seen some national reports on retail sales dropping almost 9% just in March alone. That could be even larger in April. So we haven't seen any formal information distributed by the Iowa Department of Revenue of what they're seeing in retail sales. But we do know this is going to go down. And how long will that affect retail sales? So we're expecting a 10% reduction, of course, but a kind of a best and worst-case scenario in there. As the council knows, this sales tax would really set aside for capital projects, particularly with the exception of our financial support for the Urbandale Station 43 in terms of its operations. A portion of the property tax relief on the Dallas County local option sales tax side. So that is one kind of operational component. And then the property tax relief portion on the Polk County side, supporting the debt service for the public safety facility. And then the balance of both of those 50% going towards capital projects. So at a staff level, and you'll see this kind of translate with both franchise fees, road use tax, you know, sales tax, a good portion of that capital work is going to go towards a street rehab projects. And so we've already been having discussions on projects that we would likely have to look at on, put on hold or delay as a result of this. But one thing I do want to mention on sales tax, it's a little bit unique, is the way the state remits the sale, the local option sales tax to us. If they are planning to keep their schedule of what's projections of what they would be paying out to us as they identified a number of months ago and continue to pay that out and then have kind of a true-up in November. And that true-up will likely show less revenue for the balance of this current fiscal year. And then so there'll be some kind of negative, you know, true-up to that, but that will be spread out over a number of months. So the benefit of at least how the state handles the local option sales tax is it gives us time to plan and it gives us time to absorb those losses over, over time and not all in one shot. So again, more to come on this as we actually see here more information from the Iowa Department of Revenue on this. But just kind of wanted to mention where we're at at this point. On the road use side, this is another one that's in the short term is going to have impacts. We received basically projections from the Department of Transportation that they could see upwards of a 25% decline in terms of telling cities, this is what you should plan for at this point for the next couple of months. And so we've outlined those scenarios. What I will say is you should know more here in the coming months. We did see here recently in our March payment or April payment or the previous quarter that one of our higher payments that we've seen for the month of March, which is kind of a little bit interesting. So the March, February combined of this current fiscal year was one of the largest March, February we've ever had. So it's kind of interesting how that may, how that may play out. Oh, looks like everybody, sorry, it looks like, did we lose everybody? And now everybody's back?
One moment, Matt. It looks like we lost the Zoom room real quick. I think the mayor's back in. Mayor, can you hear me all right?
I just, just came back in. We were down.
It seemed like just for a minute or two.
Yep.
I heard every bit of it.
Yep. The, the meeting continued. I think we just must have lost the council room just for a moment. I'm going to go ahead and bring that back in. Matt, you can go ahead. We continue with your participation, with your.
Okay.
But I'll have to bring the room back in to bring Matthew back in. One moment.
Okay. So on the road use side, again, this is another one of those where the declines in the revenue and the revenue loss. We plan on looking at the transfers that we normally would have done out of road use to our capital, our street rehab projects in terms of not doing that transfer. Again, it kind of goes back to the theme you're going to hear from me is that at this point, potential delay in capital projects is likely the most significant result that we're seeing at this point with the information that we have, and that's what we're planning as. with the information that we have. And that's what we're planning as from a staff standpoint due to these revenue losses. And the utility side, don't have much experience to go off of at this point. We're not seeing any drastic changes in terms of usage yet. Of course, we're going to be evaluating that, knowing with the number of businesses, particularly restaurants that are high or heavier water users being kind of out of commission, if you will. For the most part, that'll be another piece that we will be looking at and kind of monitoring our water activity, which then translate into our sewer usage. But for the most part, in terms of delinquency on payments, we haven't really seen an uptick in that to date. In fact, we sent out less reminder notices this month than we did the previous month. So again, we'll, we'll be following up with the council on this one in terms of the usage, but and delinquent accounts. But at this point, we haven't seen any substantial impacts on the utility side. So finally, this is the last section. I've already mentioned some of these items in terms of that long-term financial impacts that will be be important for us to watch over time. That kind of provides a summary of at least where staff's head is at on these rough revenue projections. Again, we hope to have more detail for you when we come around to budget amendment at your second meeting in May. With that, Your Honor, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thanks, Matt. Questions, Council?
Councilwoman Judd Kent has a question.
Matt, I really appreciate your update and your efforts to keep us looking forward. However, I think maybe there's a little bit of optimism in the saying to wait that isn't necessarily warranted with what we're hearing from the governor and from the national stage. So I'd like to hear just a little bit more about some of the contingency plans. What are we doing to reserve every single possible dime we can right now? Should we be looking at furloughs at a time when it can be supported by state revenues because that won't be likely down the road? Just interested in some thoughts along those lines.
At this point, in terms of at least our conversation on furloughs has been limited. We did look at scaling back our library staff hours, knowing that that was going to be functioning quite differently. But at this point in time, at least our conversation has been not doing any reductions to other staff operations because we're still out. We essentially are still operating all of those other areas in terms of continuing the public safety and maintaining our, our city infrastructure and park systems. And then development activity continues as well. So we haven't really identified specific things at this point with those services continuing as as planned. And so we are also evaluating and have identified specific capital projects, as I mentioned earlier. But on the operational side, we're definitely obviously looking at, I wouldn't call them furloughs necessarily, but obviously if we start to look at not opening up the aquatic center, looking at reduced recreation programs, there's, there is a very large set of seasonal staff that go along with that, that the city would not be moving forward with and hiring. In fact, we're holding back seasonal staff, even hiring, bringing them on from our partner rec standpoint right now. So those would be the main kind of cost saving modifications that we've made at this point in regards to staffing.
Okay, I do appreciate that. I know a number of areas of the country that are a little bit ahead of Iowa in terms of their impacts have been moving to make some of those adjustments. And I just definitely would like to see us doing everything possible to make sure we're not doing layoffs. So that's the value of furloughs, especially at a time when there's significant support from unemployment with the extra $600 a week that's coming in. So I'd just like to make sure we don't look back and regret not taking advantage of some programs. So appreciate your thoughts.
Other questions, Council?
Mayor, Councilman Weaver has a question.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So Matt, looking at roughly a about a million dollar hit in the expected case. Are you saying, just so I'm clear, that, that all or a majority of it is going to come out of the capital fund and minimal will come out of the our reserve or general fund?
I would say at this point, that is correct, based on our current projections that it's going to most greatly affect capital. Will have some effect on the operational budgets in terms of exactly that hotel motel component. But for the most part, it's a, we're viewing it as insulated in capital from what, for what we know right now. Of course, that, that's sort of Judd Kent's point, that can definitely change.
Sure.
Operations. But then what I would also mention is that, you know, this council in terms of the financial decisions you all made for budgets have put ourselves in a very good position in terms of our operating reserves being 30% or more in many years. And I think because of that, one thing that I would advise, I know in the past couple of years, the council has looked at any excess above 30%, looking at continue the flood buyout program. For example, I would suggest to you that we put a hold on those kinds of efforts and maintain our reserves as high as we possibly can as we come out of this current fiscal year to protect ourselves and insulate ourselves from making, you know, future swings that may come again in the fall, depending on what happens with the virus. And so those will be the kinds of recommendations that you'll be hearing from staff.
Yeah, and I would agree with that as well. On the worst case scenario, it's closer to to 2 million. Is it the situation where you foresee, if we were to hit worst times where that is mostly coming out of capital or again, are we hitting it? Are we starting to dip into reserves at that point?
I would say in the worst case scenario, if you're looking at, the one I'll jump to is the, is the hotel motel one. If you're seeing, if we're seeing the worst case scenario on that, we have an approximate $435,000 loss just in terms of the city budget. There would be, I think at that point, we're, we're, we're doing some things that we're already doing in terms of holding capital, holding capital equipment expenditures, which we're already doing to insulate ourselves. But I think there would be the potential you may have, you may have to tap into a little bit of reserve there. But I think for the most part, when you look at the totals, what's also included in that worst case total is 550,000 on delayed property taxes. So to me, you're still going to see that revenue. It's just a matter of when. Is it in the current fiscal year or is it delayed into the next fiscal year? So I would say that that worst case number is more closer to 1.3 million versus 2 million versus delayed versus loss of revenue. So I think if we're in that worst case scenario.
Hey, Carson.
Making modifications to budgets.
Carson.
Okay, last question. On the capital side of things, you're saying you're looking at a lot of some of the road projects and what have you. Are you going to provide us with some sort of list of here's, here are the, the projects, the capital projects that are impacted that by that we believe we're looking at, you know, having delayed or, or what have you?
Yes.
And one of the reasons why I'm asking it, I'm curious as to what the impact or if there is going to be an impact to, for example, the public, the new public safety facility.
So no, that's a great question. So yeah, we definitely are, we've been working on the list, talking about projects. Some of it is interesting. It would be in this current year. So like, for example, a couple of meetings ago, we actually, I think our last in-person meeting, we recommended to the council to reject bids on the arterial concrete patching project. Because we only got one bid and it was a very high bid. That's one, for example, that Jeff and I've talked about, that we're just going to keep on hold for right now. The, that's about a $600,000 project. So that makes up for some of the current year, at least some of these scenarios that we've laid out to you. One that we are still working on, we had three, we had three street rehab projects queued up for this year. The residential concrete patching, which is underway and that contract was already awarded. I think, I think that was the first meeting in March or the last meeting in February. We also had an asphalt project for doing some asphalt overlay on 90th, 91st, 92nd streets just north of university. That one, we would, we would advise at this time that we would like to continue moving forward with to some of the fact of where oil prices are at and that we might be able to take advantage of a really good price environment. Again, that will be brought forward to you for consideration if we get really good bids, if we're able to even save some money on that one. But then holding on the concrete patching one to kind of be as a reserve, not knowing where a sales tax in particular is going to be at. And so that's for an example in the short term. Outside of that, we're really looking at 2021 projects and projects that we may put on hold. And that will provide that list to you. When we get around to the budget amendment, we have a little bit better idea where these revenues are at. But so because of the delay, for example, in sales tax would be in the next fiscal year. So that would more affect our 2021 projects, more so than our 2020 projects that we already have the resources for. And then in terms of the public safety facility, I would argue that at least in, at least in staff's mindset, it's, and we want to really protect the contribution that we're making to the city of Urbendale for Station 43 and the public safety facility, basically our property tax relief portion, which is 50% of our sales tax revenue. So obviously we're not looking at cuts that are that significant at this point where we would be getting into those numbers. And so those would be the ones that I would say we want to kind of protect first and then evaluate the capital projects for the other 50% next. Because at the same point, one thing that we're talking about, and I'll mention this a little bit at the end in terms of where we're at with the public safety facility, that we look to bid that out later this summer, this fall, there may be a really good bid environment for us. And one thing I'm keeping an eye on, on public safety in particular, is that there is a, a federal infrastructure bill as a part of a recovery effort later this year. Is that, is that a project that maybe could take advantage of a federal program? So those are just some things we're thinking about on the public safety side, but we'll definitely have that list for you in terms of the capital project.
Good discussion. Other questions, Council from us?
Hey, Matt, it's Eric. A quick question. Do we see the Clark Street rehabilitation and have any impact with this on that project?
Not at this time. Those funds were already secured prior to all of this. So we have, we have those funds in the bank, if you will, for this first phase. Now, with that, what it, what these, depending on how these revenues come in, particularly sales tax, it may affect how soon we would start the second phase of Clark Street, for example, next year. It may affect that 2021 phase.
I'd move the resolution setting the public hearing.
Second.
It's moved by John. Who was the second?
McCoy.
Moved, moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion?
Hopefully found Carson.
That being said, would the council please vote? This is five to zero. I'm glad you got as big a kick out of it as I did. Okay, the second action item then is professional services agreement for financial audit FY '20 through FY '24. Aid Bailey, OLP, and Joyce, you're sharing this with us. I think Joyce is sharing this with us.
Yes, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. What we have before you tonight are the results of our efforts in sending out the RFP for the audit financial services agreement. As you remember, we sent those out in late March and received them back right in the middle of the pandemic there. But we had a good response. We sent them out to nine firms, which included the state auditor's office, and we had five proposals back. When we did this five years ago, our criteria that we evaluated them on was primarily just in cost. So this time around, I wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive and evaluate them not only on the cost basis, but the other qualification factors that they would have. So I think I outlined those there in your memo. And so the weight of the cost was up to 25 points of 100 possible points. And currently, for the past five years, we have been with Denman and Company. And we've had a, a great relationship with them, no problems whatsoever. And they've done a very good job for us. In fact, this year, we also engaged with them to do the GEMT reporting requirements for us. So they did, they were a big help with those. So when we evaluated them just by the cost alone, Denman was the low bid. Then came the state auditor's office. And Aid Bailey was third in that category. So, but then when I went through the entire process with staff and did the other components of the evaluation with them, Aid Bailey came to the top. I think their depth and breadth of what they could add to the audit for us with, as far as when we're always looking for improvements to our processes and adding bandwidth to our staff, their proposal really shined to me in the, the other things that they could offer us that we are not currently getting from Denman. So I think that is where the, where the recommendation came from. The state, of course, goes without saying, they could do the job very well. But they did state that in the off-season, they have limited availability to help us. And that is a very valuable piece to us and that ongoing communication throughout the year is, is kind of what I'm really looking for, to have somebody that's engaged with us. And the other aspect I liked about Aid Bailey was the fact that they work currently with the city of West Des Moines and the city of Urbendale. So their knowledge of our collaborative efforts that we have with those cities would be, really help their learning curve. And their references were very good, very good reference from all, everybody on their list. And since, you know, in the previous round we did back in 2015, they did not bid our audit at that time. Their presence more in the metro area, I like that aspect of it too. They have had a local office in Des Moines since 2017. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you have for me.
Questions for Joyce, Council?
There's a question from Councilman Weaver.
Ted, go ahead.
Hey, Joyce. Thanks. So the scores are really close there between Bailey and Denman. So I guess my question is, is it worth switching vendors with the potential risk involved in switching vendors and the additional work that's going to be involved in doing that if they are? And if Denman has a better pricing?
And they do, I guess, in the, the depth of their, what Aid Bailey proposed, I mean, as far as their communications, like for example, on their website, we can sign up for newsletters. They have e-glass. They have webinar opportunities for our staff to participate in. They did a better job in demonstrating the educational background of their team and continuing education and where their specialties lie. I guess when I stepped back to look at it, I felt like if I wanted to push the easy button, definitely I would go with Denman. But I felt like, and when you make the change, that first year does, does take more time. Definitely it does. But I felt like it was worth it.
Okay, fair enough.
Other questions for Joyce, Counsel?
Mayor, I don't see any other hands up.
Well, hearing none, I take a resolution.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Sorry, second. Weaver.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted. Is there further discussion?
I just want to make a comment that I will be voting against this. I really appreciate all the reasons and I think they're valid. I just think we really need to be showing that we're looking to save every dime. So that's the only reason.
Okay, thank you Susan for sharing that. Always appreciate that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the council please vote? Item passes four to one. Thank you Joyce.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to reports now and Pete will start at your end.
Thank you, Mayor. So, quick report tonight. First, tomorrow we'll be picking up a set of signs that we'll be putting up in and around the greenbelt and some of our most popular trail entries, which happen to be some parks. Want to show all of you what those signs are going to look like. Again, the point here is to make sure that people who are enjoying the greenbelt are enjoying it safely and prioritizing public health, but also getting out there and getting all of the good that comes from being in that beautiful space when we're all feeling pretty cooped up and dealing with quite a few, bit of anxiety, uncertainty. So this first one is designed really just to remind people in a lighthearted way that we can do this and that we're going to get through it. So that's why we pulled out our greenbelt goats and put a little mask on them and encouraging everybody to remember when they're out there walking and riding and running that they, we can be safe. We can be healthy out here and we can get through this together. The second sign has more directives for folks that we'll see. So, simple things, and you may have seen this, actually we modeled it off a lot of what people are seeing in the West Des Moines schools, playgrounds and fields. Emphasis on staying six feet apart. Make sure you stay off those playgrounds, benches, shelters, because they're not disinfected. These last two, first, you know, we know about, we've heard a lot about washing hands. It's the easiest way to make sure that you're keeping that virus away from you. And then watching out for a lot of people, the, the trails have been busy. We expect as the weather gets warmer, they will be even busier. We want people to be safe. We've had some incidents where people have bumped into each other, a few, and people congregating or things getting a little tight near some of the bridges and other popular points. And so we're going to make sure that we give people a good reminder about how important social distancing is right now. Any questions about the signs? Okay.
I have my hand raised, so you probably didn't see that. I thought that a piece that Des Moines City Councilmember Carl Voss included in his newsletter about a much greater than six foot distance that's needed when you're bicycling or running is very, very helpful to see. And I worry a little bit if we leave that component out of this that unless it's clarified that those directions are specifically for walkers, that it may not be the full picture. So we can, I, I, it's probably already printed, it may be too late, but I think it's definitely relevant in terms of understanding for how to use the trails.
I appreciate that, Councilwoman. I'd like to see what Councilman Voss provided through his communications and I will look at those. Yes, these have already been printed and because of all the other valuable information, my guidance would be that we still get them out there because there's so much other more, so much other important information that goes along with this, along with just consciousness raising. Six feet, honestly, when you're riding a bike, unless you're pretty good at it, can be way too little space. The accidents we had earlier this week on the greenbelt involved a parent and a kid riding and the kid stopped abruptly and their parent didn't have nearly enough time to stop without going over himself. And so your, your point there is, is well made.
Okay, that sounds good. And we can always add a separate sign for better explanation of other uses later, so.
Other questions for Pete, Counsel?
Mayor, I did have just quickly two more points. One, there is a business record story that's coming out focused on how different municipalities are handling staffing and any furloughing or laying off staff that's happening. And so much of what Matt described tonight and the efforts that we're already making with delaying seasonal staff hires and some of the changes that were made in hours in the library, that's what we reported back to the business record and I would expect to see that article either tomorrow or in the next print publication next week. And we continue to do our work to boost community morale through a number of fun programs through the library and through the parks and also through our regular moments of goat, greenbelt goats and those have been very popular and we intend to continue doing this.
Standing Pete, thank you. Anything else for Pete, Counsel, while we have him? All right, we'll move over to Ted.
Okay, just a quick update. Hey, on the report that I provided last time on the, the Hickman interchange, we all know we got awarded that $1 million. We requested 3 million. There will be a.
Councilman Weaver, I think we've lost your audio.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have.
Let me see if I can text him, Mayor, one moment.
Well, while we're, while we're waiting for Ted, let's, let's move over to Eric quickly. Eric, anything for the.
One moment.
Nothing, I guess, John.
One moment, Mayor, let me see if I can get Eric.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we've got you, Councilman Weaver, go ahead.
Okay, Scott, you want me to go ahead and finish?
Yeah, you started at the, we got the 1 million and that's where we lost you.
Right, okay. So, we will have additional rounds of funding opportunities. So we can get that, we, we had originally requested 3 million, but because so much was requested through this process, the NPO wasn't able to allocate the full amount that we had requested. But we will have additional opportunities to, to increase that to the level that we want. So just emphasize that. And then the last thing I, I did want to mention is that I had confirmed that are now on the Iowa D, that's for 2024, 2025, but we are on their plan at this point.
Ted, just to, just to clarify, because we're breaking in and out here, but you mentioned that we are, we are now on the planning schedule with the DOT Commission for 2024?
Correct. I don't know if it's 2024 or 2025, but we're on the five-year plan now.
Okay, very good. Very good, thank you. Ted, did you have anything else? Okay, very good.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Eric, anything on your end?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, CBB Board met last week, just a couple of highlights with that. They are, we are temporarily under budget. We've, we've done a number of different things as we model and do projections on budgetary shortfalls. We've done a risk mitigation strategy that estimates $3.2 million in revenue. And we're doing a number of different things, including utilizing operating reserves. We're pulling a quarter of a million dollars from our bid incentive reserves. So we're trying to do some different things in addition to some staffing moves. There's been some furloughs, there's been some reductions and deferments of some different bonuses, things of that nature in order to really have a comprehensive strategy to, you know, conserve as much capital as possible right there. So our, the budget will be up and we'll be working, we're working that framework now right there. So those are really some of the key things right there. There's still a lot of unknowns. Greg Edwards and I had a phone meeting as well and, you know, they're doing everything they can. There's still a lot of unknowns, looking to hopefully get things, open things back up later in the year. But again, you know, there's so many unknowns right now. The point now is to really operate very, with a lot of fiduciary responsibility, but also utilizing a lot of marketing techniques that, that aren't quite as effective. So you don't have staff going to trade shows, things of that nature. But there's a Des Moines local challenge, they're good news. You've seen a lot of stuff on social media as well. So really trying to know more as we move through this crisis.
Thank you, Eric, because it sounds like all good directions and definitely keep us posted. We, we know that CDB and Bravo are going to really bear the brunt of a lot of, of what we're talking about here. So I'll look forward to having you keep us up to speed. Any questions for Eric, Counsel? Hearing none, we'll move down to the professor.
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, John. I'll pass it to Susan.
Well, you heard my comments earlier about what's happening with the North Raccoon watershed. And some of those discussions will hopefully result in the organization staying together. But they, they don't have a way to vote on having the southern portion removed. And it's hoped that Larry Weber from the Iowa Flood Center will be able to participate and kind of calm nerves down. But as Marius Agwa, the project manager for this, said, it's a symptom of deeper concerns. So we'll hope for the best.
Susan, was there, forgive me if I didn't see this, but i- is there a certain event or something that caused the, the longstanding philosophical divide that's existed out there for a number of years?
No specific event, but there is a watershed plan that is getting closer to adoption. And it has evidently been fostering more behind the scenes conversations. That Carrie Navertel, who's with the city of Storm Lake and the chair of the organization, said she did not know that this was coming until this week. It just bubbled up in advance of tomorrow's meeting, which will start at 10 o'clock.
Well, thank you, Susan. And I'll share just a little bit the dovetail on Susan's comments here. You know, I know that the two of us were on about an hour and 15 minutes or so Zoom meeting with our friends from the Taxpayer Association of Central Iowa, talking about, about the, the, what we anticipate the new normal will be after COVID and when, whenever that is. During that session was, was collaboration. This idea of collaboration and that's made the difference really for all the stakeholders, certainly the communities in the Des Moines metro. And this is water quality, stormwater management. These issues are really important issues that are going to require a lot of collaboration, a lot of breaking down of barriers. I'm sad to hear of this development and hopefully some folks couldn't come together and work to dissipate that, to dissipate that situation, but.
Just to clarify a little bit, they are questioning whether the Walnut Creek part of the watershed should be included in the watershed because they're saying technically it should be part of the South Raccoon because we are a part of the overall watershed that happens as the confluence comes together. So that is kind of the excuse driving the question.
That's the genesis of it, okay, very good.
I mean, it's, it's, right, it's kind of the excuse, like I said, but that is driving it. And it's why we need to have the DNR and the Iowa Flood Center helping to explain that hydrologic unit code eight watershed and why it is that our component is supposed to be part of everything, so.
Questions for Susan, Counsel? Okay, Michael?
I have nothing, sir.
Madam Counsel?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
All right, young Matt?
I just have a few items. Just wanted to follow up on Ted's comments related to the NPO. As a part of that granting effort, we also did receive, we were a part of a consortium of groups that were seeking, Trina actually spoke to this a little bit in her presentation, the B-cycle grant for electric bike stations. And we were part of that group submitting for that grant, working with some other entities. And they have received 100,000, a little less than what they were asking for. But that should, we'll have more information on this as we kind of figure out the details in terms of the funding amount. But our hope is, is to have a couple of locations here in Clive, at the Aquatic Center in Campbell Park at some point in the future of actual bike charging stations for electric bikes. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to circle back that that was another set of dollars that Clive was involved with that was awarded by the NPO. Wanted to mention too, for the next council meeting, we've got some, some actions coming related to the site plan for the public safety facility. I'm also having a neighborhood meeting, virtually of course, with the neighborhood a week from tonight at 6 o'clock, and I'll send the details out in my weekly update tomorrow in case anybody, any council members outside of the facility committee who got the original invite, who were interested in joining, but basically really touching base with them on the whole facility project itself, specifically that kind of south buffer area with the land, the berming and the landscaping. So that'll be a week from tonight and then the site plant, we're anticipating right now, based on the schedule, that it should go in front of P and Z and they're meeting in May and then come to the council at your first meeting in May. In terms of the site plan, we'll have a lot of exciting things to share. That will be a big item for the agenda that night. We'll want to go through a lot with you there. And I know the facility committee has been talking about a lot of items and over the last number of months related to that. We'll also have a resolution with our friends at Metro Waste, likely at that May 14th meeting for a new solid waste hauler to go into place on July 1. Some more details are being worked out, but really happy with the pricing that we're going to be seeing. I think the council will be very excited with that as well. And we'll have more to share at the May 14th meeting on that. And then talk a little bit about the transition plan related to TOTRS and some other updates related to solid waste. Also, the mayor and I continue to monitor what the governor may do related to COVID closures that are expected to expire on April 30th in terms of how that affects some of the, his, the mayor's proclamation and what we may do facility wise. As I talked about earlier, we're going to be doing things very incrementally. We're already evaluating parking rec programs, seeing a lot of cancellations in the May for that. And then the big question with the Aquatic Center, so a lot being discussed there in terms of. And then the big question with the aquatic center. So, uh, a lot being discussed there in terms of, uh, um, what may happen depending on, uh, the governor's orders, uh, any extensions or expirations. And then, uh, lastly, uh, wanted to kind of circle back with the council. I know I've had, um, been sending out some information related to the small business grant program, uh, with the Greater Des Moines Partnership, Polk County and the city of Des Moines. Um, and this is really a, a, a regional effort, uh, to provide resources to our, our business community. Um, I also shared with, uh, with you all the, uh, spreadsheet from the, the Clive chamber on some calls that they've been doing with their businesses in terms of some of the, the impacts that they've been experiencing. Um, we've seen support, uh, for the program, obviously Des Moines, Polk County. Um, uh, the partnership has already started to raise some private dollars. Uh, Polk County is essentially offering up $200,000 to match any local jurisdictions, uh, contribution. Um, from what I've heard, the, the city of West Des Moines, uh, City Johnson, City of Urbendale, as well as potentially the city of Altoona, uh, was one I heard recently, uh, maybe involved or gonna, uh, could be involved. Altoona is still a question, but the others are going to be involved in the program. Um, and, uh, uh, what we, at least when the, the mayor and I discussed this in terms of thinking about a dollar amount, the original ask was around the $40,000 range. But I think what you're seeing with a lot of communities, and I know Johnston took this into account, is starting with a smaller number initially just to see the, the usage, uh, first, um, and also kind of get to see the program of it in terms of how it's applied. And, uh, and one special thing to note is any, all of the city dollars that are put in, all of those dollars stay within the community. So for example, when, uh, twenty-five thousand is the number that the, the mayor and I have been discussing, and I know I've discussed with some of you is, uh, a number that we were, uh, pretend, if the council supportive of, of, uh, participating in this program. That that twenty-five thousand will stay in Clive and only go to Clive businesses, and then it will be matched by Polk County dollars, potentially up to $8,000 will be added to that twenty-five. And then any private fundraising that is done by the partnership, um, any dollars that is brought to the table there will also match our dollars. Um, and one thing I've learned here recently is that the private dollars that are raised will only go toward into communities that are participating in the program. Again, we're going to get more details on this. Um, even tomorrow, I, uh, there's another, uh, Zoom call regarding this, but I wanted to circle back with the council as a group and just kind of confirm your direction uh, on, uh, whether you want to participate in this program.
Council thoughts?
Yes, at a, a small level that can build up.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, John. Uh, Matt and I, we've had this discussion as well. I like the twenty-five thousand starting figure. Taking evaluation of the program and then see if we want to continue with that. I think regionally we have to be involved, and I think locally we have to be involved as well.
I wanted to pass on that I've had a conversation with Jay Byers about this program. I wasn't talking with him, um, on behalf of Clive, but just in general. And he talked about the difficulty they're experiencing in fundraising for this because of the amount of hurt that's out there from some of the traditional private partners. So I think we should be very serious about starting at the level that we think we might want to be at. I'm not sure this is a big wait and see opportunity. I think the match is going to come on the front end and we should take advantage of that.
I guess I'm not understanding the, that, that, that. I'm a little confused with the match. Match to me would be twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand's coming in. Matt just said if we put twenty-five thousand in, we get eight thousand. So I'm confused on the match on the front end, if the match isn't even there for the fundraising. I was a little nervous. I'm not against the program. I'm, you know, to Susan's comments earlier, we, we really got to watch our money. And, you know, that, that's, you'll pay one way or the other. So you put too much in and, and I know we're talking twenty-five, forty thousand, but it's got to come from somewhere. So we cut something, we dip into reserves, you know, what have you, but it's, it's again, I'm not sure what the difference is between the, you know, the auditor vote on how many dollars we were, could have saved from Denman to this other company, but it couldn't have been more than, you know, forty thousand dollars. So if we're watching our money, we need to watch our money. And again, I just need more information.
Matt, can you elaborate on the Polk County match and the formula to choose there?
Yeah. So, um, in my conversations with Supervisor Brownell, um, the two hundred thousand that Polk County is, is putting in is strictly for the matching to local communities. So if we're putting in twenty-five thousand, for example, that Polk County would add, would match, uh, a certain portion of it. And, and what the number that I've heard from them is around eight thousand. That would get added to our twenty-five thousand. So essentially then Clive businesses would be eligible. We'd have a, a pot of thirty-three thousand between Polk County and Clive or Clive businesses. And then in addition to that, depending on the partnership's fundraising efforts that the, the private dollars could also be added into that, but that'll be strictly based on the application process. So it may go to some private businesses, may go to Urbendale, may go to Des Moines. It'll, it'll depend on how the partnership wants to do that. But the key, at least what I've heard, is that the private dollars will only go into communities that are participating in this program. So the communities that have, that have chosen not to participate at some financial level, um, might not see any of the private dollars that the partnership is fundraising. At least that's what I've heard at this point.
But if you do, if, I'm sorry.
I don't want to get caught up in semantics, but I think to Michael's point, it's really not a match. It's a leverage.
Yeah, that's a better way to.
It would be coming along with, and then potentially on the private side through the partnership, some additional leverage as well. But it's, it's not a match. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Sorry, Michael. I think I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, that, that, that was to the point and as well as just because we put in does not mean any of the private sector will come to us. Is that correct, Matt? I mean, we can participate, but it doesn't then guarantee us any money from the private sector.
Correct. It doesn't guarantee, and, and the mayor used a better word. It's definitely more, it's more of a leverage situation. We're leveraging other, other stakeholders to participate with us. So yeah.
Potentially.
Potentially. Polk County is, is a for sure.
Yeah.
What's been described to me, it's the private dollars that would be potential.
Okay, thank you.
So a little tougher in this, I guess, in this environment, to see heads nodding around the, uh, the, the dais, but, uh, I think Matt's looking for some direction, uh, to continue to stay involved in these discussions and, uh, potentially to, uh, uh, to pull together the resources that the council is comfortable with. And, uh, so I guess we need to ask for that. Some, you know, Matt, I don't know how you want to, how we want to achieve that if, uh, if everybody's wants to verbally state, uh, yes, that it's okay to move forward, or how do we, how do we want to do that?
Yes, at this point, Your Honor, uh, you know, I don't have a vote per se. I think that will come later in terms of a resolution, but what, um, what I would like is I'm, I'm kind of hearing support for, yes, we want to be in the program. Uh, yes, twenty-five thousand sounds like a reasonable start. Let us evaluate how things are going and then, uh, evaluate further in the future and then, uh, start there. And I can at least share that information with, uh, with, uh, those leading and developing the program. And then follow back up at the next council meeting with a more formal action, then they know that the, those dollars are, uh, then as they advertise the program, um, they can include our logo and say the city of Clive is participating.
Yes.
Yes, and I, I'd just like to get a little bit more direction on how that leverage will work since he said the city of Des Moines is putting in 1.5 million. So if for any reason they're doing it on a percentage basis, that'll take quite a bit of the match.
I'm a very reluctant yes. Uh, I share a lot of Mike's, uh, concerns with this.
Yes.
Mike, you have an opinion?
Yeah, not, yeah, I'm, I'm right where Ted said. I, I really do need to see more. I'm a reluctant yes. I, I would like to see that this is, you know, Clive is putting in the twenty-five thousand. It's the bulk of the money. This needs to be, you know, it depends on the delivery and everything. I do think that matters. So that the program, the money is being given out by the city of Clive. Right? It needs to, those things need to be kind of shored up a little bit for me.
Yeah, did you have something?
And to be honest, I mean, if we're talking about thirty-three thousand dollars, I was just gonna add one last thing. If, if we're talking about thirty-three thousand dollars, honestly, that's not going to get spread around very far. And I don't know how much help that's actually going to be for, for businesses that are out.
I think, I think there's one thing I want to add. Ted, I want to add to that point if I, if I may, not to, not to interject, but we've asked Christie at, at the chamber to, uh, really survey, uh, you know, our chamber membership to the turn, to, to try to get our arms around uh, the level of damage. Um, and, and I understand it, you know, thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars or whatever that number happens to be may seem like a relatively small amount of money. Um, I'm not convinced that that is all that this is about. I think it's, it's about stepping up with, with our neighboring communities and collaborating to to provide some assistance in a very, very unique, unprecedented time. Um, I, I hasten to add though, that, um, and I've had some of this discussion, uh, on, on these conference calls. Um, A, talking about, is this our role to do this? And we spent some time on that. Steve Gare brought it up uh, quite a bit. Um, I brought it up. Um, we, we've spent a lot of time tonight talking about our long-term finances and about the impacts of COVID on our revenues. And, you know, uh, we're all have, I, I just want to make sure that that's at the forefront of this discussion as well. Uh, but then also is this the city's role to do this? And, uh, you know, I, I think there's been pretty robust discussion around that. I think at the end of the day, the, the general thought was that we want to participate as part of a regional, uh, effort that came together very, very quickly. Um, have thoughtful, honest discussion about it and debate. Um, make sure that we're comfortable with it. And that's obviously what we're, what we're doing tonight. Matt needs to gather some more information and he will. Um, you know, and then, and then make other evaluations because, uh, all this is based on the fact that everybody essentially is going back to work in June. And we could have a different conversation in August. So believe me, and I, I want to share this with the council tonight, that is in my heart as we look at this. I think we should participate. We should probably participate at a lower level, not at the initial number that they asked. Um, because we're reviewing our finances and we have to be very, very careful, careful about how we proceed. But we want to collaborate and participate to some level. And I think that's an important message that we send uh, to our neighbors. Um, so I, I guess I say all that just to say, understand that we've been having these conversations as part of this broader conversation. If that helps. I think, Matt, you have the, you know, at least the, uh, the general consensus, the council to take some next steps and gather some more information and let's continue to to move forward with, uh, uh, with pulling all of this together.
Yep. I will, I will, uh, yeah, have that direction and, uh, share, uh, this discussion too when we're on that conference call tomorrow, uh, regarding the program. And then hopefully we get even more additional detail on the program that I can share, uh, following that discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to drag this one out, but I just, I, again, if it's the will of the council, I, I'll support it, but you know, I'll share this, that Metro Waste, uh, has had its first layoff and looking at additional ones. Um, I've heard tonight some asking for Clive to look at furloughs. I, I, it just won't sit well with me if we're furloughing employees and hand, and then doing and then putting forty thousand dollars out that most certainly could have kept those employees employed. And so that's some of my struggle here. And again, I'll support it if the, if it's the will of the council. But I do think we need to look at that, right?
Oh, absolutely. I agree that we do. And I think that needs to be a part of our decision-making process.
Yeah.
Uh, but it, it doesn't do us much good to contribute to a broader fund uh, if, if, if we're having to furlough or lay off or whatever, whatever term you want to use. I understand that.
Yeah.
And that, I think that has to be, that has to be at the center of our decision-making process here. Um, that and, and also, you know, the other, the other impacts long-term to our revenues. And, you know, we're just, I, I think, I think we all want to be comfortable and, and understanding that, that we're very cognizant of these things as we, as we look at this.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Well, I want to object because, just so there is no question about my bringing up the furlough idea that that is intended to be a consideration for now because of the extra um, unemployment insurance that's available. That is there a value to the employees for us to be considering that if we have people who aren't as fully engaged as they might be to preserve the ability to maintain employment down the road. There's just a special opportunity right now due to the, um, extra six hundred dollars a week that's coming from unemployment. Uh, you know, that can be of relevance. So, you know, it's, it's different than a layoff, which means elimination of a position.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, Matt, I think you have the guidance that you need, uh, for now. So let's, uh, let's continue to, to move forward and, and be very intentional about uh, our conversation tonight and, uh, and the fact gathering that, uh, that I think is important uh, when we come back, uh, to council with a suggestion of resolution. Uh, are there any other questions for Matt? Okay, um, I'm gonna just briefly, if you'll allow me, I'm gonna step back to this, um, Zoom meeting that, um, Susan and I were on. And there may have been, I know Matt was on it and there may have been, I think Pete might have been on it. I'm not sure if other council members on it or not. Pretty compelling, uh, again, and, um, I, I wanna, I just want to quickly thank Polk County and Supervisor Brownell and that whole team. Uh, their, and their, uh, uh, their health, uh, professionals, um, that have really owned this pandemic on the ground. Um, I, I continue to be very impressed with the work that they're doing. Um, they know it, they get it, they understand it. They're giving us good guidance and they're great partners. Bob brought up an interesting point last night as we talk about how COVID nineteen is affecting everything that we do. And he talked about Prairie Meadows. And he talked about the fact that, you know, uh, Prairie Meadows revenue pays the bond for uh, for Wells Fargo Arena. Uh, Prairie Meadows grants millions of dollars every year uh, for philanthropic projects, community betterment across the spectrum in the greater Des Moines area. Um, gambling revenues fund the Endow Iowa, uh, based, uh, uh, structure of found, community foundations across the state of Iowa that encourage hundreds of millions in philanthropy across the state. So it's amazing what one thing can do to have an effect on something else. And I think that we're all really trying to be mindful of that as we deliberate the opportunities that are before us. I think this, this regional tool, uh, for local assistance is the perfect example of that. So I just, uh, I, I wanted to just kind of put that out there. Uh, I think it's, it's, they're compelling thoughts, uh, but they're realities. And we're going to be dealing with these realities of a lot of unknowns for some time. So I appreciate the council's diligence. So I appreciate the council's diligence and desire to find the best solutions and the best direction going forward. With that, Matthew, are there any other correspondence? Is there anything else for for the council?
No, sir, nothing further.
Well, Mayor, before you bang the gavel, how are things on Clark Street?
I can jump in on that. Things are going well. Work has started this week. They've been starting to do some excavation, and they've been doing, it was a little little hard at first because they were getting into some utilities that they're being very careful telecoms to dig around. But progress is underway, and we've had a good week so far.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for the go to the order, counsel? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn us at eight eleven PM. Thanks, everyone.